All right, it is ten o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Chair notes, there's a quorum present. We'll do the flag slide. Flag is right behind you guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, two point zero is additions and revisions to the agenda.
I do not have anything.
Leah?
No.
We've been on into three point zero, correspondence and public comments. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair, give your name and address, and when the comments to three minutes. Folks who are signing in on your phone, it is star six to unmute yourself. If you're here on your computer, it's lower left-hand side of your Zoom screen. As usual, reminder that we are very informal here, so as we move through the agenda, if you have questions, comments, want to provide feedback, we welcome that. So to start off any public comments. Start with Denise.
Denise, well, Arlie, I would just make a request that maybe you guys could find in your budget or somewhere to have a full-sized American flag at the meeting.
Okay. Catherine?
Catherine Greiner, one six eight eight nine Greiner Lane, Mayville. I'm just making it a mission before I die to get off Starlink, so I'm bringing up internet one more time and just making sure you keep it on your radar.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for raising it. We actually found some interesting update from Moro County yesterday, which is they have hired Nick Green out of, and he is doing their consortium work, and so we are, I am planning on reaching out to him this week to to get a sense of where Moro County is and see if there's a potential for partnership, possibly also seeing if he might help us.
No, I just saw Nick last week, so yeah.
So, Chris?
And I'm also a rural resident in Michael, Oregon, and I also encourage the fiber problem to be solved. I have the fiber link thirty feet from my house, and I look at it every day. And since I joined Starlink, it's gone up from a hundred dollars, now it's a hundred and twenty. Every time we turn around, it's another ten dollars. It works, but it would be great to get fiber, so I hope you prioritize it.
Yeah, great. We also did, Delaney and I were on a call yesterday with the state of Oregon about where they are in the feed funding, which is the funding that we're waiting on to be able to afford to do it. And the last they told us is that they are working their way through the process of working with NTIA, which is the federal regulatory agency that's dispersing the money, and that they thought that they've got rules out for public comment right now. If you're interested in commenting on those, those are available. That's through the state broadband office and business organ, but they're, they told us quarter two of twenty twenty-five is when the funds would likely be starting to be released. So we're still a year and a half roughly out, but that doesn't mean we can't in the meantime prepare with a plan, so.
So is our consultant that we had is dropped off the face of the earth?
We are currently withholding the last payment, waiting for the work product from phase one to be delivered to us. We've gotten part of it, but not all of it, and Delaney sent them an email again yesterday, reminding them that we're waiting on the last.
They kind of talked about that at county college, not getting shelved.
Yeah.
I think they called in.
That, if I remember right, they, that they went to into a different company.
We're waiting on the updated cost opinion of how much the project will cost. We have all the other information, but they said they were going to update that based off of current rates for projects, and they haven't given us that yet.
Were they gonna do more work on amount of polls and those kind of things that were detailed part of where those costs came from?
The next step would be figuring out the phase two, so we can either, we have the option of signing a contract for phase two with them, or we have an option of putting it back out for bid for phase two. And my inclination is perhaps to see who Moro County is using in the, some of the maps that I saw that Moro County is using, there are lines coming in from Gillum County in their plan, and so it may make sense to have one entity drawing the network for both and seeing if there's an opportunity to collaborate.
When are you reaching out to them?
You know what, probably tomorrow. And hoping that maybe Nick might even be willing to come and talk to us at county court to give us an update on what Moro County is up to. So that's the latest, Catherine. Thanks for raising.
Great, that's good.
Any other comments at this point? If not, we'll go into correspondence quickly. First up is a letter from Judge Patnood to Governor Kotek dated October twelfth. I will just read this one into the record because it's significant. Dear Governor Kotek, please accept this letter as notice of my retirement as Gillum County Justice of the Peace. My last day of service will be May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I will not be fulfilling my judicial term, which ends January fourth, twenty twenty-seven. It has been an honor and privilege to serve the people of Gillum County for over twenty years in the capacity of justice of the peace and thirty-seven years total in public service. My career on the bench has been more rewarding than I ever imagined. I thank the people of Gillum County for giving me the opportunity to serve as their justice of the peace. Sincerely, Chris Patnood, Gillum County, Justice of the Peace. Congratulations, Chris. Thank you for your service. Also in correspondence is a letter from the Gillum County Assessor, Chet Wilkins. He is required every year to certify the homestead rebate amounts, and so you will have that in your packet as well for folks who are interested in seeing any of this stuff. It's always online as part of the court's packet. So if you want to go back and read Chris's letter or see the letter from Chet. We also have the Gillum County Treasurers Report included. It includes the revenue expense report, unbalanced summary, and bank account balances from August twenty twenty-three.
I had a request from the circuit courts to let you guys know if there's any adjustments to the cases that are going to be handled by justice court due to Chris leaving. The circuit court would like to know so that they can adjust their their assignment of judges accordingly. Apparently, when we stopped handling DUIs in justice court, they felt we should have notified the circuit court, the state, just FYI.
Okay. So I'm assuming that'll be a loop close between you, Chris, and Ryan? Okay, perfect. Thank you for listening. All right, anything else under that? Does not look out like it. So we will move right into four point zero. Woo! This is a public hearing regarding ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero-two in the matter of the Gillum County Economic Enhancement Fund. This is the time duly set and advertised for a public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero-two in the matter of the Gillum County Economic Enhancement Fund. This hearing is for the purpose of taking public input on proposed revisions to the Economic Enhancement Fund ordinance, which governs the distribution and usage of host fees from Waste Management Incorporated. This is a legislative hearing. All those in attendance that wish to testify or ask to be recognized by the court, state your name and address. And the hearing is now open. Is there anybody who would like to start us off? Go ahead, Ellen.
I would like to request not the entire fund, a percentage be given to early learning, and can you broaden the early learning? Is that just zero, five-year-olds? Or can it be education, which might, you could give funds to the school or some other entities? With that percentage?
Step back just one second, if you could, and state name and address.
Ellen, right here, eight oh seven South Church Street, Condon, Oregon.
Okay.
So, and I guess, so if you give it the entire percentage of the general fund, do you foresee budget cuts by doing that? By taking that money from the general fund?
So what, what we talked about during the last meeting, which is when we looked at this, was one, I think the general fund, right now, we're using about four hundred thousand of the million that goes in. Looking at some of the expenditures in there, I think we can realize savings in a couple of places that would not mean budget cuts in terms of like significant changes to how we operate. But we also talked about if as we're working through the budget process, we need still to backfill some of the general fund, that we would take that from the SIP rather than from this fund. So that's what we discussed during the last.
And we also moved part of the general fund money into the housing, and it didn't all go into the daycare.
Correct.
So a portion of, I think about four percent went into the housing.
Uh, it's a grand total of eight, so it was, I think, four, one from the sheriff's department or from the law enforcement line item, and the existing stuff for the capital projects. In terms of your other question about support for the schools and other things, for this particular one, what we're looking at is creating a long-term endowment to support early education. The purpose of that being understanding that the, right now, our childcare centers rely on the SIP funds. Once those SIP funds roll off, we don't have another way other than this to support them. And so the idea is if we can build a permanent endowment while there's plenty of resources to go around, we can create a situation where the childcares do not need county support to be able to, to be operating. What that allows us to do on the SIP side is once we, once they're no longer using those funds, that allows us to, to do what we've continued to do throughout, well, since we started signing SIPs, which is to provide grants directly to the school districts for their needs. So for instance, this year alone, we've sent over one point two million to the Arlington School District. So I think there's enough money to go around. It's just figuring out which pots of money we can be thoughtful about, I think, investing in a way that long-term is going to meet the community's needs.
Can we build a percentage, the whole percentage we need to provide to fulfill this endowment, to build it faster?
Yes. So, so based on current, so folks understand, based, right now, we we, this last fiscal year are backfilling the childcares in both, both communities by about five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. In order to build an endowment that's large enough to support that, we need fourteen to fifteen million dollars in an endowment. So it's not, I mean, we're working with real numbers. The percentage that we got back came from Oregon Community Foundation, who you know runs, or you guys help, you guys invest your funds through for the scholarship foundations, have their endowments there. It's well trusted in the state. That's what they're, in terms of expectations on disbursements, they put this to plan on four percent in order to meet that long-going, our long-term need. And what we talked about frankly, is I, I feel strongly that I want our communities to have something when twenty, thirty years from now, they look around and ask what, where all this money went, where, where did we invest it? This is something that will continue to fund and ensure families that have little kids that are trying to go to work, trying to run businesses, that they have access to safe high-quality childcare for their kiddos. And so anyway.
And then early learnings only go by the zero, five-year-old, or will that change later to take five and up?
I mean, for, for now, the idea is that it's backfilling the childcare centers. Arlington is taking after-school kids, so it would qualify to help them operate. Condon, as you know, has zero to five right now. If something were to change and they were to take after-school, it would support those kiddos as well.
Okay. I just wanted to note that I don't feel that four now should go to them. And then also, on your data, under four point one, you have possible first reading. What does that mean? Are you not going to have a hold of second meeting? A public meeting?
Nope.
You are?
No, we would just have one hearing.
You're just going to have one hearing?
Yes.
Which is today?
Correct.
And you're not going to have a hold of the second public meeting?
That's what I just said.
Okay.
Well, it said possibly.
Yeah.
Not decided, possibly.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff Crowder with Port of Arlington, one hundred Port Island Road. I appreciate the, the aim of the, the background discussion, receiving this, this notification and hearing. I think it, it matches up with the priority with the county court has selected to work on early learning, workforce helping, and business development. I'm open to the adjustments that would go with, with that distribution of funds. But I appreciate the, the county court following through with, with funding that matches the goals and priorities that we've established.
Hey, Catherine?
So Catherine Greiner, one twenty-eight South Main Street. I'm speaking as city administrator of the city of Condon, and the six percent that has come from the county has been a godsend to a lot of our projects. So I just want to thank the county for continuing to providing the city of Condon with a percentage that we're aiming to get our infrastructure goals done that we set every year in January or February, and also our broadband goals that we have had over the last several years, and our housing goals that are still going. So thank you for keeping that in mind.
Anybody else? April, you want to go first, and then Chris?
April Amit, one one seven five West Second Street in Arlington. So just a few questions. Right now, do both childcares in Arlington and Condon qualify for how, for, for these monies?
So they, I'm not sure I understand your question. Can you state it in another way?
And how it's written, it has to be certified, and, and so do both, I, I'm just asking, do both members qualify right now for these monies?
Yes, both are licensed by the state, yes.
And then so, I, I mean, I kind of listened to what you had to say about about funding, but is this going to impact staffing at all for the county? And as far as like, does the union need to know that it could possibly impact staffing for the general fund not having those funds?
No, because again, we talked about there is plenty of money sitting over in the SIP accounts, and so typically, like, if you look through the budget, the library, the, the weed department, the road department, all right now are being backfilled by SIP money. And so once we dig into the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, we'll see if we still need a supplement with one of, one of those sources, and it would just mean that the money's coming from the SIP account rather from this, from this account.
But it can eventually run out.
At, at some point, but the difference, April and Chet can confirm this as well. He's not on, but he and I had a discussion about this is those SIPs, when they roll off, are rolling into the general fund. So the discretionary pot of money gets smaller, but the general fund revenues that are coming in grow because those SIPs are rolling off, the tax abatments are rolling.
Tax base.
So they become part of the tax base, so.
They're not, you're not able to use them in the same way, but they're in the general fund.
They're not discretionary, but they're in the general fund. And so we don't yet know exactly what that looks like, but where Sherman Counties are rolling off, I think they just rolled off this last budget cycle. It looked better than what we have been planning for.
A lot of that's repowers, so the value of the projects are worth more than what they thought they would be. So like they repowered this up here, and they actually increased the value of what it was in the original construction with the repower. So the value of that, when the SIPs goes off in four years, instead, because the original SIP agreement was for fifteen, when it goes off in four years, the value of that's going to be way more than what was expected.
Go ahead.
Let me know, Claylock. I certainly, and I, I think we all do, support early childhood set aside. I would hope, though, to figure pictures that we would look for and work for at a time when childcare could more nearly be provided at home by family members so that we don't have a continuance of the two working family member home. And I think that's a goal that we ought to set countywide.
Well, that's a tough goal, and it's a
I didn't say it was easy.
It's a federal issue.
It'd be our aim, rather than to provide childcare outside of home.
I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, Denny, but man, oh man, when you look at where we're at today in society, and it takes two families to to work in the inflationary situation we're in currently and all that stuff, it's, is that even possible that the county has any control over any part of that? Or you just end up leaving your childcare and your families in a mess because they can't afford childcare?
Yeah, and I, I mean, from my own vantage point, I think families should be able to go to work if they want to, both parents, if they want to. For some of them, it's not just a financial thing. It's a way to contribute and, and do things that fulfill people. And I think, you know, we'll hear right after this from Waste Management, who will probably tell us that they're still recruiting for all positions and how hard the labor market is. It only is made worse if by policy we're establishing that in every two-parent thing, family, that we we're just expecting one stay home, and that doesn't even touch on single parents and how they navigate having young children and making sure that they have a safe place so that they can provide for their families. I think we just have probably, Demi, a fundamental disagreement on people's abilities to both have children and have fulfilling careers, and I think, I think our community thrives when people have the choice to be able to do.
I'm not suggesting that people not have the choice, but I think there are people, there are two working family members in households that would choose not to work and to share, stay home and raise their children if that choice were made available. And I think our goal ought to mean as much to allow people to make the choice to stay home as it is to make the choice to work.
I saw, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it's mind-boggling, the statistic that talked about the amount of single parents there are in society today. It's crazy. Which makes, I mean, that, that's really impactful on, you know, what happens with them.
I would never want to get into telling people what they could or could not do with their kids as far as childcare is concerned. I would say that that is their personal choice, and I would not, as a county court, want to say, no one of you has to stay home, and I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even want to.
My suggestion is that we try to look to a time when parents who are now forced both to work, would have the option not to work and rather to stay home and take care of their children.
So how would you suggest we do that? Give them extra money to stay home?
The answer.
You're going to have to program that, help people get certified. A lot of people who want to stay home with their kids get their certification to be daycare providers so that they can stay home with their kids. So just throwing you an idea.
So we have supported that.
They have done that.
We've supported that.
Some of the Rocket.
So that, that's, that's something that
Through the, through the frontier.
And it's already links out there.
That's a good one.
Grant training for people that want to do that.
That's a really good one for people who want to stay home with their kids. That solves the take care problem.
Yeah, they have had meetings with the Rocket Program for, especially for the after-school kids that are not really old enough, will stay at home by themselves, but don't have that after-school care.
And another thing that's important to recognize with these funds is that those funds come from Waste Management, who supports where that money's going. It's supposed to go into economic development, and they support, in fact, have come up with part of the idea of where that funding should go. Because it is all their money that they're giving to the host fees, through the host fees agreement, with some stipulations on it and how it's supposed to be used.
Karen, give us P O Box four eighty-one, Condon. One, we would love the information on that program that you were just talking about, for people to be able to provide daycare in their own house to like get training for that. We have a lot of victims that could use resources like that.
That's on the Chamber website.
I, I, we just have, like, if you have pamphlets.
I'll send it to you guys.
Right, that would just be good for us to have in our office for the people that come through our office. I guess, I, just my testimony or comment or whatever, I'm seeing a lot of growth, obviously, in Arlington, not as much in Condon. I'm expecting, from what I keep hearing through job growth and through housing growth and the different initiatives to allow development in Arlington, that we're going to see a population boom here. I've been trying to keep track of our statistics at the district attorney's office. We, I, I'm taking as paperless now, so this is very hard, going through paper files, computer files, to have statistics. So I don't have great numbers for you. I'm just going to be upfront and honest. I do not have great numbers, but the perception is, is that the crime rate's increasing, particularly in Arlington, which isn't surprising because we're also seeing increased tourism to the eastern side of the state, which means we get more people coming through, and we have people stopping their trucks on the highway and stuff like that. So we're just getting more crime out here. I'm worried about switching pots of funding a little bit, just a little bit. It makes me nervous because I think we might see an increase in need in the law enforcement side of the budget. Quickly, maybe not next year, maybe not even two years, but in the next five to ten, I think that there's going to be a greatly increased need for money in the law enforcement budget. We're doing great right now where we're at, so I, I don't have concerns with where we're at right now. I just keep looking at Boardman, and I think that's going to be us. I think we're the next Boardman. And I think we're going to get it from both sides. I think we're going to get people who are being priced out of the Hermiston Boardman area, because Hermiston's insane right now. And you've got people who are being priced out of the gorge, and they're gonna, this is where they're ending up. And so I think, and we're seeing it here, we're not seeing it in Rufus, because we have better infrastructure. So I think we're going to see a lot more population, and with population, we're going to see problems we've never had before, like homelessness, transient crime that we don't really have a ton of right now, theft crimes that we don't, right now, our theft crimes are people coming over from Hermiston and finding farmers' unintended equipment to steal from. I think we're going to see an increase. So I just want you to be cognizant of that. I, I definitely support early, early childhood education all the way, and I think we sometimes overfund offices like mine, not ours in particular, but other ones. We're great. But please be cognizant of that when you're looking about how much to take and put where, because we're not adept at streamlining, because we're either slammed or we're doing nothing, and we can't tell people, you need to be on call twenty-four seven if something happens, and we're not going to pay you for it, but when something happens, you need to show up. It just doesn't work for law enforcement. So, and we have a or her, I need her badly, Maggie. That's all I got. Just, please be cognizant of that when you're looking at the redistribution. The redistribution of funds, our funding stream uh needs to be very stable. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I would say though, and it's, nothing is set forever, can always be adjusted down the road. And um and a lot of our certainty is gonna be tax funding through. Renewable energy and, and SIP funds, highlighting and how all that.
And I definitely.
Works out, there'll be a lot of adjustments to come down the road.
The renewable energy is where we're gonna see the growth, that's gonna cause this, so it's gonna go hand in hand as it grows. That, so will the tax base from that, which was, is what's gonna also increase the population. So for, for at least a little bit, I think we're, we're good. Um in that respect, like I'm not, I. Housing's also a super big issue, because you can have all the funding for the, the early childhood education you want, but if you don't have the housing. We're gonna be struggling with people who are trying to find places to live and they're gonna be living in their motor homes and. It just can all have a domino effect.
Yeah, and, and I think that the difference between the housing and the daycare, from what I feel is daycare does not get. Developers in to help daycare situations.
True.
Housing will get developers and private money in to help.
True.
Housing.
And I think one other thing to just note on this is the idea with the endowment for the early learning is that. We're stashing this money away so that. Long term. We are not. We're not in a situation where as the SIPs start rolling off. And there's less and less money for, that we have discretionarily to help support that um. That they'll be able to stand on their own two feet, so they're not.
Budget money should come from a budget. It should come from the general, the budget money should come from the budget, not from discretionary funds.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's uh, it's. We have been um very fortunate as a county. To have the duality of Waste Management Host Fees and Energy SIPs. And we have been. In terms of how we establish our budgets, operating in a sense where we have not. Really face the reality that our current tax base does not support where our current county operations are. And I'm not. Saying that we need to cut county operations, I'm just saying that's a reality, if you look at the numbers. In the general fund, is we have been backfilling our own budget for years and. That presents to, it, it will uh question about unions and stuff like that. If any of these sources start going away or drying up. Um then we're upside down, and we don't want to do that. We want to be thoughtful about making sure that we're not overpromising, I think. And um and so the hope is, when the SIPs roll off, they look good in terms of what it does for our general fund. That will hopefully long-term sustain county operations. Um and. The money that we're spending towards workforce housing development is also, by the way, building the tax base simultaneously. Um so uh. Hopefully, it is a uh positive sort of cycle where we're ahead of that need that you're talking about coming in. Other comments? Just had no. Sorry.
Hi, uh, anybody else? Sorry. Even though, okay, um I thought I'd go, I ordered eleven, so I just wanted to read, I. I sent an email to some of our elected officials that are part of the general fund, and I'm echoing some of what I'm hearing. But maybe I can add a little bit, I'm just gonna read the email I sent. Um at the October eighteenth Gillon County Court meeting, there will be a public hearing on the economic enhancement ordinance. One of the major areas of proposed change is redirecting. And I noted twenty-three percent, because I thought it was twenty-three percent, it's actually twenty-three percent. From the general fund, approximately a million dollars per year for the Gillon County budget. To early childhood education endowment. All of our departments in the general fund are affected as elected officials, in addition to the county court. Prior county courts must have interpreted that it was appropriate to supplement the general, general fund with economic development funds. Economic development funds are derived from Waste Management tipping fees, as I understand. I imagine the justification for utilizing these funds within the general fund is the fact that departments within the general fund are affected by economic development. Because of Waste Management's existence and general economic development, all general fund departments are affected. Examples include more traffic affects law enforcement justice court. More voters affects county clerk, more homes purchased bills affects the assessors office, more people result in more crimes affecting the DA's office. These are just my thoughts and assumptions of what prior county courts must have been thinking with this allocation of the general fund. The new idea is to re, to redirect a large portion of money out of the general fund in the name of early childhood education. And I noted not necessarily childcare as I read it. My concern is where the cuts will come, come budget time next year. How will this affect all of our departments? Should we go as a whole to the county court, there's a couple of us here, to ask these questions? Will they reduce a portion of our department's high sort percentage? Will it be jobs, wages, or what? Will we have some assurance that nothing in the general fund will be reduced based upon this decision? Would it be more realistic for the county court to take a portion of the twenty percent and leave a portion in the general fund? This matter affects all of us, and now's the time to ask questions before action is taken. This does not seem to be a slow roll for the agenda, as they have a possible first reading on the agenda after the hearing. My calculation is, now, this would have been on the twenty-three percent, eleven percent reduction in the general fund for the budget. Now, I did hear you say that there's some cash carryover, but that could be spent at any point in time. Um. So I'm just echoing some of what I hear.
Yep.
I also say that there's many women here in this back part of the room that are the original working mothers of this county, so we all care about childcare. We had, we didn't have the internet to ask for, who can watch my kids today? Um I just hope the solution's gonna permanently solve the problem. If this ends up being the county courts. I know that yesterday the childcare was closed. I know that a clock, one slot costs about seven hundred dollars a month. When it's closed, they still have to pay the seven hundred dollars a month. And I hope that perhaps there's a diversification of ideas with childcare as opposed to all center-based. In home care, um supplementing, kind of sort of what Danny's talking about, uh maybe a nanny program. Look at all options so that families can go to work and not have to worry. And I think we all share that goal, but is a center option the only way? Thank you.
Thanks. Um Michelle, did you have one as well? Did I see?
Yes, yeah. I'm so cool, we sit in the log in West Est Street, on in Oregon. Um. If I heard last discussion on the general fund, and that does, anytime you take away or you hit general fund, that is a concern, um my departments and the general fund. Um it would. I just echo some of the comments, um it is concern. I, I hear we're anticipating SIP money can fill it. Which isn't guaranteed, that's why I'm hearing we're redirecting some of the funds too earlier, because SIP is not guaranteed. Um I'm hearing there's gonna be additional taxes down the road. All of that speculative, or maybe more guaranteed, but we just don't know the numbers. Um and so part of my concern is um. Uh Judge Patton just mentioned a million dollars, so is that twenty percent? What, what is the dollar for these percentages? I'm just, I mean, I, I just don't know how much we're never really talking about.
Yes.
And we're talking about kind of one line item right now, but where's, how much money for everything?
So it's um. We don't have a firm answer on that, because it's dependent on the amount of tonnage that actually comes in, so. So the host fee agreement is a, is a amount based on tons that come in, so when Waste Management is doing particularly well, it's more. When they're doing, when there's not as much tonnage coming in, it's less. Um so, but we have, the way that we do this is we actually. Plug this into, so we're a year ahead, and so we'll know based on tonnage that's coming in, what's gonna come in. Uh or what's the budget for next year. Um. And so I just want to reiterate as well, so folks understand that the twenty-three percent that was going into the general fund, we don't spend all twenty-three percent of that. If you look at the current unappropriated amount that's in the general fund, it's over six hundred thousand dollars. We transfer in just over a million. Um and so there's about four hundred thousand right now that's actually being used for operations. I will also note that three hundred thousand of that is a contingency line item that sits in the county court's budget that we don't touch. So this is why I, I don't feel the same nervousness that you do, is because I help write the budget and I'm very familiar with the numbers and confident. That um that we're gonna get to the savings that we need without compromising operations of the camp. Um that being said, the court has already decided or said that if we need to transfer in money from the SIP temporarily. Again, keep in mind, when the SIPs go away, on the discretionary side, when they go away, they're rolling into the tax base. They're currently sitting outside of the tax base, we're not taxing them. So when they roll in, it's not a if we get money off of them. We will receive tax dollars off of them. What we don't know is exactly how much that is. Is it more than a hundred thousand, which is roughly the difference between contingency and what we're actually spending? I mean, I would put money that it'll be more than a hundred thousand in tax, taxes that come of this.
What, what's the average? I don't think you ever said, what's the average amount that we get that this twenty-three or twenty percent would represent? So.
Well, it, it has increased.
Last two years.
So I was gonna say.
Always gonna increase, but it's really.
Dollars, do in the math, that's four point eight three nine dollars.
Four point eight three million dollars and the twenty-eight percent, I gave the first number, sorry.
My, we get, the city of Condon gets two hundred seventy-five thousand, so we get six percent, so that makes four hundred eight. That's about four point, almost four point six million.
So, so.
So they're twenty, that's nine hundred thousand, right?
Of the four million dollar revenue, we're dedicating twenty-three percent?
Twenty, twenty.
So almost.
And we increased the dedication for housing in that. Was we did that. And the other thing that I do know about uh Waste Management is they did secure another contract too, which is gonna increase host fees too.
So the concern I have is, there's a lot of just trust us, we've got your back in the future, but the thing that's gonna be written. And it's gonna be put in place is gonna be this. And so I, I mean. I say this as a politician, I don't really trust us politicians, when you say trust us, you know what I'm saying? That's the part, I think, is that what's making other people nervous, or is it just me? Because the only part that's in writing is taking money away. The only part that's binding on you three is the part that takes money away from the general fund. All this other stuff about, well, we can do this and we can do that, those are promises that are not binding on any of you all, and that's the part that makes me nervous.
So, so the ordinance has been reviewed and changed eight times.
Hmm.
This is one more change.
It's my first one.
Why is it, why is it being done? I'm sorry to interrupt. Why is it being done at this point as opposed to? In concert with the budget approval process?
Because it needs to be in place prior to when, prior to when we write the budget. So this is the law by which then when we write the budget, which will happen here in three, four months, we'll start writing. This has to be in place so that when, when I sit down and start filling out the forms related to this, I know where the county has authorized the money to go. It has to be in place before the budget is written. Um because.
This ordinance.
The ordinance does. Because we can't budget and then change funds. The county can't, after the budget is written, then come in and change.
Not like effective today.
Well, my question is this perhaps, can the ordinance? I guess it is, be written in such a way that it doesn't commit dollars? And then the dollars follow during the budget process?
No, because it's county law. So. We. Like. If we don't pass this, basically, the existing distributions stay in place. So it has to be, we, we can't retroactively fix those things.
So if the twenty percent needs to be written into the ordinance at this point, the remaining eighty percent is also written into the.
It is, all a hundred percent is spoken for.
And what percent goes to the general fund?
None.
Zero.
And not needed at this point.
I think to Chris's, Chris, Judge Patton's point earlier about how the courts. Use this to fund county. Keep in mind that this is a thirty-plus year agreement that's been ongoing with Waste Management. So thirty years ago, the county didn't have any SIPs, they didn't have any other discretionary way to pay for county services. So it does not surprise me that under Judge Pryor, she was diverting funds, that court was diverting funds into paying for county operations. Because they would not have had any other option but to do that. I think the point today is that we have multiple options to fund the needs. There is enough money to go around.
Why is it that the other elected officials, some represented here, feel uncomfortable about this? If you say we have so much money to go around?
I don't know.
I, I'm not real sure either, because most departments run a reserve that carries over every year.
Yeah, we have a healthy beginning fund balance every year. Um we have. Multiple options to fund county government. We're not.
We don't cut their budget and they, they turn what they want, it's a pretty fat budget, they turn it in every year, it goes through the process, it gets accepted. County court approves it. And there's always reserves left in each department, the weed department be one place there hasn't been. But almost, I, I would say every other department has some reserves of some that gets carried over year after year after year.
Just a personal observation, I, as an unelected anything, feel uncomfortable. That people that I've elected to represent and help do our business, the county's business. Feel less than comfortable. About. Your activity on behalf of the town. That, that does not. That doesn't feel comfortable to me.
I appreciate that. I would say, I mean, I think. The three of us probably feel more comfortable because we write the budget.
Sure.
And so we understand funding streams, we can, we see the entire picture, not just what's in the general fund, but all of it. And I um I think maybe that gives us uh.
We react pretty flexibly to, to all requests. We're pretty flexible to whatever comes up and, and. The, to, to what the judge said earlier, we have about. Thirty-plus counties in the state that are pretty jealous about where we're at.
Oh, yes, I used to work for Cricketak County, they're in a similar situation across the river. I have, I have just one other question of this juncture, and that is. Um I've been out of country for a while, but before I went out of country. We were receiving um postal votes countywide, were receiving quarterly reports from the county court. And in my, having been away, when I got home, I asked, do we get those? And I assume that those are any longer thing provided?
I think we've had uh, we've had some upheaval in other departments, and so county court staff has been pitching in for um. Public transportation over the summer, but we will continue to have those, it just been a.
The answer is no.
That the answer is that we still, we haven't discontinued it, we just staff have been, have a, staff have been working on some other priorities.
Because I think that's important. Um I always say the last one on our bed was of no use, but uh. It's true, it was of no use, it had nothing about the county. It was about activities by other organizations, but nothing about the county. Um I don't even know how the county can afford to pay for, but anyway. Um I just think that that's important, and maybe, maybe more sharing would make me feel more comfortable about the discomfort I feel in the audience.
Fair enough. All right, any other public comments at this point? Michelle?
I just wanted to finish. Seven eleven West, Condon, Oregon. Um. So I just wanted to say, I'm not opposed to the early learning. I raised my family here, I got to use, I was available. Needing the childcare in Condon, that's where I live, that's where I accept my daycare. Um very, very thankful that, that people, that county court at the time helped with that and has helped in the past. So I utilize that service, I'm a fan of that. I would just encourage and just throw a little tidbit, I know that the county has, and sort of been mentioned, the scholarship funds. So I'm not bringing it up, somebody, I think maybe even Judge Barr, you mentioned that, Campbell. Mentioned the scholarship funds, um the courts in the past have helped that, so maybe just consider it a spectrum, um you have your early learning. And then your post-education, that. Um, you have your early learning and then your post-education that helps. With, um, you know, going into mechanical trade schools, that helps with our economic and maybe keeping people here, helping maybe get them licensed so that they can. Go be labors or run heavy machinery at Waste Management. And I know our kids are benefiting and if we can increase that opportunity for graduates. Um, to get additional schooling, and I'm not just talking about going to a four-year university and talking about trade schools or however that's crafted. Maybe that's incentive too for people to work here and live here because they know their kids will have an opportunity that will be reduced. Fiscally to them so that they can pursue something. So I'm, I'm just encouraging, don't forget there is another end of the spectrum. Um, I, I do always part the early part because I got to use it and it really helped with my situation. But we've got another one at the other end and maybe that helps with our whole economic development enticing people back to the community or just. Keeping them here, I mean, and then maybe some homeowners. And so it's just a domino trickle, so just want to encourage you, I mean, I don't know what that might look like, what the percentage might be or whatever, but. Um, maybe we can share some of that, I know both scholarship funds and either end of the county are trying to create their own endowments. And, um, they've been working a very, very long time, especially been on Conne. And even if we got just one year of this, this would be huge, huge, um. And help alleviate some of that. Um, so just, just think about it, you know, maybe include maybe both spectrums.
Well, even if you could get those, some of those preliminary classes to be taught at high school level. Before they even. Go out, so. I don't disagree.
I agree.
I do know it's a priority for both, both schools districts.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Any other public comments?
Um, just a, a question. Can you help, this may not relate, so if it doesn't, just you jump me on. Can you help me understand what is going on with the transportation, the, um. Banning or the, you know, in order to get people to and from. Uh, I understand we still are providing, uh, medical appointment transportation, but nothing beyond that, is that true?
I took a. Load the other day to Hermiston to get groceries and. Brought back stuff for other residents in the county that had ordered groceries. We're, we're doing more than that, but we can speak to that center department.
Yeah, so currently, one of the full-time drivers or part-time drivers we had is helping in the office. So that leaves us three drivers that are paid, we have our volunteers. And then the two staff that left used to drive part-time, so we are down. At least three drivers with the. Transportation and one of the volunteers down here I think was. Doing treatments, but I think he's back driving again, so. And we are, like Pat said, we're trying to accommodate him, if, if there is a van that is going to Hermiston. And there's somebody that wants to go along and go to the store, that's fine, but as far as just. Calling us up and saying, hey, I want to go to Walmart, um. We're trying to avoid that just because of our shortage of drivers at the. But we're working on getting a director and a dispatcher hired, so.
This is just temporary, we have, we're in recruitment, um, it's just a matter of we had. Significant staff turnover in that department, it happened simultaneously and. So we have to prioritize people who need medical rides above people who are running errands, um. It's not unlike, we had to do that during COVID as well when we had limited drivers, so.
How long has it been that we've not done beyond medical appointment?
Well, I, that's not completely true, Denny, because I did a load, I did a trip last week that was all groceries. I took a bus last week.
So either way, our, okay, here's the deal, um, I go to Europe every year. This year I went to Europe, I, I left on a weekend in May. And I was to return midweek in August. And I got a notice that said, don't plan on transportation. Uh, from the airport. Because only medical appointments are being, um, addressed. So if I were to leave tomorrow, would I have access to transportation or would I not?
Think it would depend on whether there's drivers available to do that. If there are, if there are people who are calling in and need services to medical appointments. And you're calling in for a trip to the airport, the people who are calling in for medical appointments are going to have the priority in, in how they're dispatching.
So we are in a temporary situation because we, I understand we have the money to pay for somebody.
We just have staff turnover, Denny, this isn't difficult, it just, we have.
It is difficult for me.
I, I understand that and I, I want to say that I didn't think we went, did the medical only until September.
Yeah, it's been very, very brief period now, we're just allowing staffing. Our staff works really hard, they're trying to get everybody that they can.
That I'm just, I'm not. Staff ended, I'm on the service receiver end of it.
Totally get it, and I think what you're hearing from Leah and us is that we, they're in the process of hiring as soon as they're restaffed. Uh, some of these, uh, disruptions will, will diminish, so. It's just a matter of not having enough bodies physically to drive people, but. You can volunteer for folks who are interested in driving, that helps alleviate some of that, yeah, so.
But temporary is temporary, so, okay, we are in October.
Okay, let's move on.
Last thing, if I may.
Well, as you know, we are government.
Related to this or something else?
You would have to say. We provide. Thank you, Waste Management and the county, we provide a homestead rebate. Um, and I, I'm not sure how much that is, it's up to a certain amount.
It's five hundred ninety dollars.
Okay, so for, for, uh, two dozen. Homeowners, we would pay about ninety thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars. For ninety thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, we could pay. For land and air ambulance service for every person in this county. And I have recently been aware of yet a third family. That is kind of upside down because they did not have. Um, airline membership. And for, for ninety thousand dollars, that could be, you know, equal to one county employee perhaps. And we have the money. I would like the county court to consider. Funding. For land and air ambulance for every household in the county. And I, and I would go further and I would encourage you not only to fund it, but to negotiate with those providers. For a better deal or a good deal. And in my mind's eye, a better deal would be to have membership based on household rather than family. Because we have some households that have multiple families. So household would be a better deal for us on, on the county's end, thank you.
Okay. Uh, any other public comments at this point? Anybody online? I have not been looking at that screen. Give me just a minute to unmute if there's anybody. If not, uh, thank you everyone for all of the testimony, this has been helpful. Commissioners, am I, um, I am under the assumption that we are ready to close the hearing? Um, seems like there's been a full. Community discussion.
Okay, the only thing I was going to ask you is you did talk to the sheriff's office about the law enforcement line.
Yes, and we'll get, we can get in, we can continue the discussion amongst us as we, um. I just want to know if I can close the hearing.
Yep.
Okay, so I, I will go ahead and close the hearing, hearing is hereby closed, we will move into actual, uh, deliberation, which is. Um, four point one, possible first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero two. In the matter of the Gillum County Economic Enhance Enhancement Fund, and then Leah, your question, yes, I did talk to Gary and to Chris. Uh, Fitz, they are both okay with that coming out of the SIP instead, so I will just make a note when the budget worksheets come out. In a few months to add a line item there.
Okay.
Um, and work with Gary on what that amount should be, he actually. Wasn't sure he needed the full amount, so. Other questions, anything you guys want to go through in the actual ordinance? I think we captured. First page is basically just, um, updating numbers. I did remove the sentence regarding the, the capped amounts because there are no capped amounts anymore in the distribution. Um. On page three, you'll see two changes that were requested by the assessor's office. One just had to do with, uh, some confusion around deadlines. They thought it was clear to just say it's thirty days after the postmark of the denial letter, the. Reference to November one was tripping people up. Um, and then the married couple question we have, uh, there are several, uh, couples in the county who are legally still married, but. Uh, very much separated in the way that they live their lives and, uh, so. We don't want the assessor's, uh, office playing marriage counselor and figuring out who should have the homestead check. Um, so that was a fix for that, um. Page four is obviously the changes in distributions which have been, uh. Discussed, uh, we, this would be effective July one, twenty twenty-four, so I added that in just so it's clear for the budget, um, writing process. Um, attachment A is just updating the rationales, removing the general fund and the capital projects fund. Um, the law enforcement line item. Also wanted to make clear in the language for the special projects grants, that those funds roll over, that wasn't explicitly stated. Uh, previously, but that has been how we handled it. Um, and then updating the business development fund and then, uh, attachment B is just the long-running, uh, sort of historical. List of things that have been changed, um, so I updated those, so future courts know what we did.
So the only question I had was, is there like a time, do they? I know you said that they've changed it over the thirty years, but. Is there usually a time when they just go back and visit it, is it just whenever?
They do it, I think the ordinance says every five years or whenever the court deems necessary, whichever sooner, so, um.
Makes sense.
Any questions, concerns, anything that didn't quite look like how we thought it should? If not, uh, process for this, if you guys wish to move forward for an ordinance, you'd do a first reading, um. And then, uh, assuming that passes, then there would be a second reading and adoption, uh, at the next county court meeting.
Okay, I moved to have the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero two by title only.
And I'll second it.
So moved and seconded that we have the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero two by title only, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Motion carries, uh, let me just find a copy. In the county court for the state of Oregon for Gillum County, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero two in the matter of the Gillum County Economic Enhancement Fund. And then there needs to be the acceptance motion.
Okay, I moved to accept the first reading of the ordinance, number twenty twenty-three dash zero two by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero two by title only, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I. Any opposed, motion carries. Alright, uh, second reading will be held, uh, at our next meeting, um, on November first in Conne. Okay, let's move on, um, next up is the consent agenda, any questions on that?
Oh yeah, I do have. Minor change to the minute from. October fourth, just in. Announcements, it's said, the, the, the. Presentation meeting with career director Mike. Who might want to put in the car, turn in there.
Okay, so you just want to, uh, that's October fourth, so as amended and add, uh, MacArthur's last name, okay. Okay. Anything else? Uh, do I have a motion on the, uh, amended consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as amended. Uh, the consent agenda consists of consider approval of September twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Consider approval of September twentieth, twenty twenty-three executive session minutes. Consider approval of October fourth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes as amended, uh, adding Mike MacArthur's name in the notes. And consider approval of IGA number six three, six five three zero with Oregon Department of Corrections. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, any opposed, motion carries, alright, Waste Management has been waiting patiently. Um, so we'll get an update from you all.
Um, is this okay?
Yeah, that works great.
So Leah, Shannon, two, three, five, she ain't drives in. Management. I will have his meaning, Mr. Jim Dunson, who is our second president of the project fund yet. I'm now the manager, you know, a lot of new areas familiar with him, and then I would like to introduce Miguel Nescad. Miguel is going to be taking my position at the end of the year, so he will be our new environmental protection manager. He comes from North Carolina, so he's going through a little culture shock.
But no humidity.
Which kind of was a problem for him. He has been with us since June fourth, so he's, um, learning, 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 so. Um, I feel like Waste Management is kind of been a topic all morning.
You think you have, in a, in a good way, though.
So kind of an update on where we're, what, where we're at right now, um, Columbia Ridge. Uh, twenty twenty-three, quarter three volumes, um, tonages have been strong, we're about six hundred and ninety-seven thousand tons right now. Quarter three, in twenty twenty-two, we were at six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, so we got some growth. It still seem to be going strong, year-to-date tonnage is two million, four hundred and eighty-four, three hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, full year last year was two million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, so we're trending towards where we should be. Uh, we were up last year by about seven percent from two thousand twenty-one. Um, host pays, the host fees paid to Gillum County through the month of August this year are three million two hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. So that's where we are currently this year, we still have. Uh, September, October, November, and December to pay. Last year, we ended up at four million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. So that's where that four million number that keeps getting doubted about comes from. Uh, chemical waste management, chemical waste management has been very strong this year. They're at about seventy-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight tons year-to-date right now. Um, full volume last year was eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three, we may, we may get over that this year. Host fees paid from Waste Management or ChemWaste, it's been about seventy thousand. Today this year, last year it was around ninety-two thousand. So we're still trending right where we need to be, I think our volumes are going to stay strong through the end of the year. Um, site updates, Columbia Ridge, we've been really, we've been doing really, really good with safety. Um, we have just really not had any significant incidents or injuries. Um. We are doing on-the-job training for most of our positions, um, some of our other more technical positions that we need to fill do require. College educations and such, but we do a lot of on, on-the-job training, we always encourage people to, to look into that. Um, so we're going to talk about housing. Housing continues to be a very large deterrent in us being able to, A, hire people and B, retain people, keep them in the county. We are currently running, um, about. Twelve to thirteen shuttle buses from different areas, Homedale, Adeles, Primus City, Erie, and the Trump Cities, Conne. Um, to qualify for that bus, you have to have four passengers. So if you kind of take that number, that equates to about fifty families that could be living in the county if we had housing for them. So, um. That adds to our tax base, it adds to our school. Um, it's very important. Um, and along with that, the daycare issue, being able to let anybody in the household go to work that wants to go to work, and that helps with our need. We are running typically between the two facilities, probably thirty to forty people short throughout the year. Trying to keep people in there. So we're always looking for people. Um, I have been attending the Rocket meetings with Delaney and working on that for the daycare. Um, I have been attending the Rocket meetings with Delaney and working on that for the daycare in county. Um, it's just kind of actually my suggestion on this whole day. I want to admit that. But I thought that it would be important because we are struggling with getting employees and, and retaining employees to have good solid childcare, to offer that to people to, so that they can make a choice if they do want to go to work. So dedicating a line item in the budget to help with making sure that our childcare facilities are funded, to me was it. Projects that we've got going on, um, we just got the East Rail Crossing on Cedar Springs repaired um in August, so that's been helpful. Uh, we've added some additional um vertical wells. I think we added four additional vertical wells and we drilled out the caisson in the new cells. So we continue to advance our landfill gas program. Um, we were hoping that Cedar Springs will be repaved this year, but I think it got pushed to twenty twenty-four. Um, the other thing that kind of uh came up with the C A C meeting um was the discussion once again about the bypass road. And um I think that Miranda came up with a good idea to have the P A C members possibly attend the road committee meeting and have that discussion and see if we can move this through the road committee and view that's a different avenue that we can take. Um, it sounds like that meeting is December fourteenth in, in.
At the courthouse.
Yeah, but I think that's a good avenue to approach that from, see what we can do from that direction. Uh, chem waste projects, uh, the Part P renewal is continuing to be ongoing. Uh, we do have a map over there that shows all of the new stuff that we are permitting in the permit because we are looking at the future and looking at growth. We know that we are going to have to grow to manage the volumes that are out there on the horizon. Um, construction of S twelve is finished, that's storage area, and we have approval from D E Q and we are currently using that. Uh, the gas cylinder project that I talked to you about before with the funny-looking trailers, that has been now pushed to December. So I don't know when, when or if that's going to show up. I think somebody on the email said, see you next year. So um, that's kind of where we're at with that. Jim would like to talk to you a little bit today about the renewable gas project.
Thank you, um, and Adrian. Trying to get a picture uh printed for you guys, but it looks like it's not gonna make it. But in any case, uh, as you're aware, we talked about the R G facility, the renewable natural gas facility. Uh, effectively takes the gas that we collect from your ridge, um, cleans it up and puts the, the biogenic gas, um, methane portion of that in the pipeline. Uh, that project's fully funded, uh, it's kicked off. Michelle got the uh, uh, site plan uh, uh, update on it yesterday. We're gonna talk to her um about building permits and stuff like that today. So that, that project is full force. I've been told if I don't get the thing started by January twenty twenty-five, uh, look for another job, so. We're uh, moving, uh, you know, waste management has committed a lot of money. Um, you probably read it in the papers towards sustainability and RNG projects and these types of projects. And this one um is one of two. All of, uh, there's another one the same size that's being worked on right now is Columbia Ridge, but they're, all the others are smaller, so this is very, very large. Um, and a very important, important voice management to get that done, get it done on time. So, um, we're also working on the CO2 wells, uh, sequestration project. We partnered with Pacific Northwest National Labs. Uh, they're a government lab, uh, they're experts in CO2 sequestration with salt. Uh, I could spend an hour and a half talking to you about that and won't, but ultimately, uh, we're, we're working through the process of that. And we're trying to align those two together. It's probably gonna come later uh in, in the year, but or in, in twenty twenty-five than uh the, the plant startup goes. But uh, other than that, I think we're, uh, you know, lots of planned growth this year. There, you know, I, I think really because some of the economic downturn that U S has experienced, we're not seeing a lot of the remediation projects uh come up out of the ground. They're there, uh, and they will be soon. Um, Port Harbor is one that we're working on previously, uh, to get that one uh to come up out of the ground. So there's a lot of very large projects coming up very soon. Very soon, kind of relational time as far as remediation projects go. Lot of projects coming, so a lot of hope for the future here. And you know, the Part B permit that we're permitting uh is, is one major component of that also, so. Any question?
Questions?
Yeah, that, that, so the gas will go by pipeline, is that correct? And then do you already know where it's being sold to then? Is that?
Be used.
Oh.
Sort of.
There you go.
So, so the way that works is it's called an allocation, right? It, um, it's renewable natural gas. Uh, you put a pound in and then we can allocate a pound out, right?
Okay.
Um, and we're allocating all of our renewable natural, natural gas or running our RNG or uh, natural gas collection vehicle fleets. And this facility will run all of our fleets of Oregon, Washington, and Southern California. So it's a big deal, but yeah, we're trying to make it circular, so.
Good. Other questions?
All right.
Thank you guys so much and for sitting through a very spirited, uh. Every time you come, we have something interesting on the agenda.
Could we take a quick break?
Yes, um, let's, we're gonna just, just five minutes, does that work for you? Okay, we're gonna take just a quick five-minute break to reset and, uh, and then we'll wrap up the agenda. When you're young, though, you can think a grown-up's gonna be so fun.
It's gonna be fun.
Okay, guys, are you ready to be back in session?
I am.
Okay, all right, it is uh eleven twenty-three, we're back in session. We're going into seven point one, which is consider approval of Q ninety software data migration consulting services agreement. Um, I will take this, Rachel might be able to join us, she's at a conference, but, um, but I'll, I'll take a stab at it and then if we have questions, so be it. Okay, so as you recall, back in August, the court approved, uh, moving forward with a change in our accounting system from our current one, which is CHAVS, over to CASL. Um, one of the things that, as Rachel has started to dig into, uh, the nitty-gritty details of the transition um, that has come up is, uh, making sure that the data that is currently sitting over in CHAVS migrates over safely to CASL. And, uh, so she's talked to a couple of other entities that have gone through this process, some which have tried to do it themselves. Um, their recommendation was that we not do that, that we hire somebody, um, to actually come in, do the data mining, um, make sure that it's, basically they prepare it and then they test that it all migrated over, uh, safely, um, prior to the new system, uh, going live. And, um, based on kind of their timeframe, this would also significantly reduce the amount of time for the entire transition to take place and give us a little bit of assurance that the data, um, migrates safely. So, uh, Rachel, uh, got a quote from Q ninety. Uh, we, I am recommending that the court approve it under a sole source procurement. Um, based on, uh, that Q ninety, as far as we know, is the only supplier that can, can do this work for us. Um, questions?
Nope, I have visited with Rachel and I believe that we need to get this to happen as quickly as possible.
And they've done this before, this company?
Yes.
So they know the issues with it?
I believe so. This is sort of their, the data migration is their expertise, um.
I think we have to do it. Do we make the motion? I move to approve the agreement with Q ninety in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred for the data migration consulting services.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agreement with Q ninety in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars for data migration consulting services. So further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go into eight point zero, which is announcements and next meeting. Uh, next meeting is gonna be November first. That one will be in, uh, Condon. Wanted to note for the public and just a reminder to the commissioners that the third meeting is canceled in November because we will be at A O C's annual conference in Eugene. Um, so if we have any business that comes up that requires the courts sign off before December, the, before the December meeting, we will just do that through a special meeting as it comes up. But otherwise, uh, it'll be this one and then the December meeting. Also wanted to note, beginning in the December meetings, um, most likely we will have contractors in the courthouse working on the ADA renovations. And so I'm gonna be working probably on getting us an alternative meeting location, probably City Hall, but I haven't talked to Catherine yet about that, um, just so that we are, uh, the contractors don't have to work around our meeting schedule and they can work away on Wednesdays. Uh, so we'll have more information, obviously that'll be part posted on the agenda, so the public knows where they can come see us. But I just wanted to flag that we're planning on being displaced for, uh, several months while contractors are working on the courthouse.
Uh, what? Heard that they were gonna use the E S D offices, is that what?
So, uh, we are basically the wing, the county court wing. So transportation, senior services, uh, the planning department, because Michelle's office will also be under construction. Juvenile department and all of the county court offices, we will all be displaced during construction. And so, uh, folks are, depending on the department and their needs, either, uh, going to be working from home and being available to come in and by appointment, uh, to meet with people or we're looking at alternative, uh, office space. And so right now, we don't have everybody landed yet. I'm still meeting.
I guess was Pioneer C D C offices.
Yeah, I talked to Pioneer C D C and then we're also talking to, I think the chamber has an extra office. Lori Anderson has a couple of, uh, an office up above, like where the insurance is. Uh, the E S D building right now looks like it's full. Um, but we'll have, we'll have notices out to the public to let them know how to reach everybody. The nice thing with our internet phone-based system is that the phone lines will go with people's computers and so they'll, they'll still be able to pick up their line. Um, so if people call, nothing's gonna change on that front, it just depends on where people are working from. The idea being, obviously at our end, they'll be, those offices will be torn apart, but then for other offices, um, it's, the, the fewer people we have coming in and out of the courthouse while the contractors are working, the quicker they're gonna be able to work and hopefully get the project done. So, um, but more to come on that after I get everybody officially, uh, landed someplace. Um, but we're working on it right now.
So, and then when, when do they think they'll finish? How long, once they start?
So the bid documents allow for them to, like, for construction to continue until April-ish. Um, and so we are expecting, uh, October twenty sixth is the deadline for bids to come back. The court will take up the bids on November first and award them. And then, uh, there's a waiting period before we can actually sign the contracts by law, so we'll have to wait for that to happen. So most likely we would have contracts signed in mid-November. I, I would be surprised if they can go right as soon as we sign, but never know. Um, so I would expect sometime in December, we'll have contractors in the building through, uh, possibly late April, um, depending on what the supply chain looks like when they're trying to get stuff in, so. We did have, we did do a initial mandatory meeting, um, where Jeff shot walked him through the building and there were several, uh, general contractors that showed up, so I'm hoping we'll have, uh, some competitive bids come in. Pat, what do you got going on?
Um, I liked attended the Condon can meeting and so did you?
Yes, I did.
It was really good meeting, um. Also attended A O C Health and Human Services meeting since the last court meeting and the Public Safety meeting and the O C Transportation and Community Development meeting and the Ledge Committee meeting. Um, tomorrow is Nor Court Board meeting. And, um, Public Safety, A O C Public Safety Committee and the Health and Human Services Committee are meeting to discuss ballot measure one ten only meeting. Um, because they both have interests in the, in that, um, hopefully fixed for that legislation. And so I'm gonna definitely go to that and then I was supposed to speak on Monday, um, in regards to recovery at the Health and Human Services meeting and that got moved till November third. So I'll be going to Salem to speak at the committee meeting on some of my experience with recovery. And that.
Is one of you gonna elaborate on the Condon can meeting or?
Um, please can.
I can do it, okay. You want me to?
Sure.
Want me to do it now? You wanna do your update first?
I, I only have a couple things, uh, Delene and Wilson and I finished the quarterly revenue and expense reports yesterday for the public health. Woo-hoo.
Good job.
Second time around, didn't take us three hours, it's time to figure out where we, what we were doing. Probably took us about an hour. And then I was gonna talk about that there, they've hired, uh, the speaker, um, uh, Stephen Hill for Red Ribbon Week and he'll be in the schools in, um, Condon at nine thirty on the thirtieth of October and then he'll be in the Arlington High School at one o'clock that same day, so. Um, that's paid by the public health, so.
I will definitely be there.
Great, so that's a good deal. And other than that, lots of little things, but nothing, nothing big.
That's a little thing, yeah. Uh, so for me, yes, I did go to the Condon can meeting as well, Pat was there, um. This is kicking off what is about a, I think, nine month process that the city of Condon is gonna, uh, it's not, I should note, it's not a visioning process for the, the city government, it's a visioning process for the community, um, and so, uh, but this first meeting was pulling together stakeholders from a different community partners, so the school districts were there, uh, or the school district, OSU, um, Summit Springs, obviously county was there, uh, sheriff's office was there, a health district, just a whole bunch of, uh, partners. And, uh, the first meeting was really just, uh, getting a feel for how the rest of the process is gonna go. And, um, and doing some initial assessment of the community, where people thought we were strong, where there were areas for improvement. Um, and so next steps, I think over the next couple of, uh, months, there's gonna be some focus groups with, uh, with select groups of people, um, they're working on a community survey that will go out early next year. And then based on that, we'll start pulling together a vision statement and sort of a I think they were saying like a twenty fifty.
So is that like a monthly meeting then from?
Um, it's not really set up like that, so they'll be, this next couple of months is gonna be a little bit quieter with just people kind of working on their own things. And then there will be public meetings in the spring, so that'll be the opportunity for, um, folks who are not being pulled in as part of a community partnership, um, to come in and just share what they want the community. And, uh, I think the whole point, um, that Catherine and Jeremy Kirby, who's one of the counselors, shared was just this idea that when the city government is setting goals, this is sort of a, a big picture thing for those who are working on projects within the community to have those be synced and so that everybody is on the same page about where the community is going, what the priorities are, all those kinds of things, so. For folks who are interested, uh, it's not just limited to people who live within city limits, so if you're, if you count yourself as sort of South County, uh, be looking for opportunities to participate and, um, and it should be a pretty cool process, I think, to sort of come up with this vision and then based on that, I think the city council will kind of align its priorities with what the community says it wants to see and then the rest of us as community partners and what we're prioritizing, we have a good roadmap for that community of, of places where we can plug in and contribute to sort of making that vision, uh, come alive. Um, let's see, other than that, uh, this afternoon, I should have, I should have flagged this for folks, but just in case you're on Zoom or interested, we are gonna have a joint work session with the Port of Arlington, uh, as well as any other taxing districts that wanna show up and have a conversation about projects we're working on, areas for, uh, uh, cooperation and coordination. Um, tomorrow, we're going to have, uh, the Rocket Group is gonna be meeting monthly going forward for about the next year or so to keep momentum going on all of this childcare stuff that we talked about today, how to engage employers, how to get home-based providers more engaged and getting resources, um, facilities for the centers themselves and where they need to be, all of those things are, um, sort of things that we're working through with that group. Um, and so the next, their next meeting is tomorrow afternoon, obviously Delaney and I'll be there for that, um. Let's see, the only other thing that Catherine would want me to flag if she was here is on November second, at five thirty, there is a public meeting, the port is hosting, related to feedback on the old grade school building in Condon and sort of their remediation plans and all of that, so if, for folks who would like to provide input on that, um, that's gonna be part of their process that they need to complete in order to go successfully complete, uh, compete for funding, um, and so, and also if you care about the building and what it, what it turns into, good thing for you to follow and stay involved in, um, and I think that is, uh, I already mentioned the bids are coming back for the courthouse on the twenty sixth. Um, we do have, I sent out an email to our nonprofits about the Rogue Gillum County program uh, that we discussed last meeting, those are due back on November second and then I would expect to have discussions scheduled with us in December, uh, or November second, uh, then our discussion would be in December. And I think that is it.
Um, one thing I did forget, since Cedar Springs Lane repaving came up today, that because it took forever to get the engineers out there, we're too late in the season to get out on bid to do the paving job, so it will be moved till spring when weather permits. And we do have things in place a little better to get it to happen earlier next year.
Got it.
It needs to happen.
So, when is the, like, at White Park, when is the ODOT doing that bridge, do you remember? Is that gonna be coming up this next summer?
Um, yes. Um, God, it was on the last Lord John Day meeting too, um. Uh, Transportation Commission meeting, but I don't remember the dates, but I do know that there is some concerns running around harvest, so I think.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering if we need to start.
How they do it because the detour is not a good detour. So, it'll be, yeah.
No, because they'd have to go like Hail Ridge and.
And like back to baseline and all.
Down them.
Or back in the Mon Rock.
Yeah.
Yep. Not, not any good options.
Which is fun to drive in a a side by side, but I don't think people with their little cars are gonna wanna.
I don't. And I do know that it's one of the big DOT projects coming up in this next year.
Yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order?
I'm sure I forgot something, but I'll remember after this.
November first, I think, is the next meeting, so if you.
I gotta start, go back to my list.
Write it down. Okay, uh, if not, it is eleven forty one and I will adjourn the meeting.
No problem.